Welcome to the Tuesday, August 10th, 2021 Selectment's meeting. We'll have a meeting called "The Order," a public comment, and nobody, open session. We'll turn it over to our town attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board. I'm here tonight at my own invitation, at my own request, and thank you for agreeing to let me come. We've had a little bit of, a few, what I would call, maybe growing pains or something like that, over the past year or so, as we transition from finance director form of government eventually to town administrator form, which will happen. But we've, we're currently without a finance director, so that part of the government of Groveland that we are used to having a functioning part of our machinery of government has not been there. And so we've had a little bit of growing pains and some issues and some questions to be resolved. And I asked the chair if I could come and just chat with you folks tonight and maybe serve as a mediator to try and help you through the transition period, so we're all kind of talking in the same voice, we're all headed the same direction, we're all pointing the same way. We are all a team here, we all want the same thing for the town, which is good government, responsible government, and we are all dedicated to that end, those of us who are, those of you who are elected and those of us who are appointed, all feel the same way about the town. So I wanted to try and begin by asking if we can address our issues and questions and problems in a way that's both anonymous and also abstract, that is to say, not name names or even name positions, but just say, for example, if Board Member A wants to speak to, you know, appointed town employee B, do we have a process for it? Have we had problems with it? Is there something that's working? Is there something that's not working? So with that, and with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'd like to start at what I think, or what I understood was, was at least one problem, and that was the conditions under which members of the board ought to be permitted to speak to particular members of the, of the, of the, of the town hall who are elected and, or appointed and not elected. They might be members of the administrative staff, they might be department heads, they might be other folks and that, and of that, of that type. And I understand there've been some disagreements or maybe some, some issues about who and wh- where and when and how that might be done. So, Mr. Chair, let me start with you. Do we have problems in that area and, and do we have a policy that we might fall back on in order to try and resolve it?
To the first question, yes. I, I, I think so. Some of the requests from a member of the board directed to some of the staff members needing paperwork or documentation on things, taking up time that should be spent doing their regular work. And it's just taken an abnormal amount of time, so they're not able to get their regular work done. That's, I got, I got some notes here that I'll have to refer to. And here's a note from a employee. In recent weeks and months, made several requests of staff for PR records, of which the below is just the most recent. Viewing all PR records back to November 1st, 2020, having all PR records back to November 1st, 2020 photocopied, having the current week's PR records made available for review an hour prior to the meeting, having the PR records photocopied and provided privately each week, having the most recent PR records copied and placed in the Selectments Distribution box at the town hall, and the most recent request, I'm going back to February. A note below. Yeah, I just don't see it right off the bat, but a lot of those, a lot of those records, it takes time for the employees to compile those and which, it's taking, taking time away from their regular work, so they can't, can't get it done. And I think the comment at the time was, well, let, let the finance director know what you're looking for, and they should be going through the finance director, because this was when we had an interim director. Should be going through the interim finance director for these requests, not the individual employees. And that was, that was one.
Let me ask you this. Is, does the board have a policy that would govern this, that, that you have either articulated or been voted or reduced to writing or a practice and procedure that, that, that we would, that the board members could agree on would apply to a situation like this?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. So, are you, are you done, Mr. Chair? If you're finished saying what you want to say?
Yeah, I'll just reserve my, I might have comments afterwards.
No, they, we'll, we'll get back to you, but I wanted, wanted to hear from the other board members.
That's just one, that's just one, that's just one thing.
So that, that's a, that also is my understanding of a disagreement or a misunderstanding or an issue that we've had this spring. And let me ask Ms. Castrenellis, did you want to address that at all?
Yeah, so I addressed it in two manners. First, that having been on the board was prior to this, several years ago, and also been on the finance board for more than a decade. The prior practice of the board, he's moving that thing again, it always keeps moving. So the prior practice of the board was that the warrants were always available on a table in the meeting room at least an hour prior to the meeting, so that any members that wanted to look at them could. When the board was smaller, sometimes we rotated that amongst ourselves, because obviously we're being asked to sign these. So to sign them without some form of review, to me, is just a rubber stamp. So initially, we were getting financial reports in November, I think December, and that was flowing smoothly. And then I think the hiccup occurred when we had to move off-site to the fire station because the camera equipment broke. So when that transpired, then all of a sudden, the records weren't arriving until the meeting time. So what is one to do? Like, review after you voted it? What if you had a question on it? And it just went in circles. I do feel that it'd be good for the board to vote a policy on these records, so that we know that, you know, on the first of the month, we're going to get the expenditure and the revenue reports, and that one hour prior to our regular meetings, our regular meetings, all of the documents that we're going to be asked to vote on would be available for review. I think, you know, we've always had kind of a practice, but we've never had a policy. So I, I think a policy would be a good idea, so that these documents don't have to be requested, they're just there.
Mr. Naves, do you want to add anything?
Well, I do agree with Kathy that these reports should be readily available like an hour before, and we should have a policy and something that dictates that. And I think a lot of what happened in terms of falling behind was just the fact we were short-staffed. And so I think it's important that we move forward and put, and implement a policy of such.
Mr. Watson, are the, the documents that Ms. Castrenellis was talking about, are those documents that, that we could agree upon ought to be produced before a board meeting?
They are.
So, so do we have a, the basis perhaps for at least a preliminary agreement about what a policy or procedure could be with respect to those documents?
Yeah, we could ask the administrative assistant, and she can, she can let you know how they're available, because we all have to sign the paperwork. Catherine, you want, can you weigh in on that? About the payroll records that are available before the meetings?
Yeah, they're typically available at least a half an hour ahead, you know, on this table or another table. And that they are, they're typically available about a half an hour in advance of the meetings on one of the tables.
The button.
Typically available, half hour before each meeting. Sometimes, I think, maybe one or two meetings, it's been, you know, coming in on two.
Wheels right beforehand, but there's a lot of moving parts and it comes from different departments, so, but that's very rare for that to happen. It's usually about a half an hour in advance. So if the board wants an hour in advance, I, no one's typically here an hour before the meeting, but I can certainly strive to make that happen.
What specific papers are available a half an hour before the meeting, besides, I assume, the warrants to be signed?
Both warrants, the payroll warrant as well as the bill warrant.
Are expense or revenue reports typically provided?
If requested, but not normally.
Okay. Are there any other papers that are, that anyone thinks ought to be here or could be here by special request, besides the warrants and the revenue and the expense reports? And anything else you have to sign?
Well, obviously, everything we have to sign is here, and some of the members sign prior to the meeting and some sign afterwards. And then the payroll records, you know, some of those are, and anybody can take a look at those if they want, before or even after the meeting.
Are those records that need to be produced even for any particular reason, or are those just for reference before or after the meeting? Would you need payroll records at a meeting, at a select board meeting?
Yeah, sometimes it's nice to take a look at them.
So you could make a special request, then?
You mean to see them?
Or to, or to have them present?
No, they were, they're present anyway.
They're present anyway?
Yeah, yeah, we don't need to make a special request for them, they're always here.
They're always here, meaning in the, in the, in town hall somewhere?
No, I mean, at the meeting?
They're always present at the meeting?
They're at the meeting.
Okay. All right.
They're usually on the table over there, behind Jason.
Okay.
Or if there's another table set up, which would, sometimes to your, to your right, they're set up there.
So warrants, every week, obviously. We were talking about payroll records a minute ago?
Yeah.
They're always here anyway?
Yes.
Are there personnel records or reports that from time to time would be helpful to have, or is that something you're not going to, you're not going to, that's not going to?
I don't think that's something we would.
I don't think so either.
Excuse me?
I don't think so either. So, does anyone disagree with that? That's not something appropriate to have at a public meeting? But payroll records, expense or revenue reports for, on special request? Warrants always?
Yeah, well, expenses are usually, are usually here, so you can see where, where the expenses are. And normally, I don't have an old agenda, but the, it's spelled out where the, you know, the large amount, usually on a, on a bill warrant, which is broken down into the different departments. Generally, Jason falls upon him to read all that, and then, you know, so much for the schools, so much for withholding, employee withholding, the whole, the whole thing is usually read out.
And obviously, if there's something on the agenda that, that would call for a special document, like, for example, a cable TV license, you're going to want to have that here, you will have that here. Let me ask Ms. Castrenellis, are there other reports that you would like to see from time to time that aren't included here, that by special request you could make and have them present at the meeting that you think would be helpful to the board's business?
Well, typically, like, when we had a financial director, we were kept informed about when department heads would be out of the town on either a conference or vacation. So if something came up and someone said to us, you know, stopped and said, I wasn't able to reach the highway department, we'd be able to say, oh, no, he's on vacation this week. It's a small town, people ask us questions about what they see us voting on, and if you're unable to produce an answer, it's, I don't know, that it looks like we're rubber stamping and not examining it as we're elected to do. That, that's a problem. I did, I raised a question a while back on a bill that just caught my eye, $7,000, I thought, for Trinity, and I wondered, I wonder what this is for. I never saw it when I was on the finance board, and I got one answer that maybe it was for the vaccination clinic that Trinity provided for our public safety. But then, I got another answer from another individual that said, oh, no, that's what we pay Trinity to do EMS dispatching for us. So I don't know what it was for. The interim director at the time didn't know. And so as a, as a member of the board, it's like, I don't have to know every paper clip that gets ordered, but large amounts and changes in people's work hours, we ran some significant deficits last year on overtime hours, we need to be informed on over expenditures, we need to be kept updated, so that we're aware.
So that's a different issue, really, and that is the question, the policy of, of department heads advising the board on certain matters, such as when the department head's going to be away on vacation, for example.
Exactly.
So department head advising, I mean, does that typically happen? Is that, is that an issue or is that a non-issue?
I don't think it's an issue.
Well, we don't, I have no idea when anybody's gone right now.
I mean, what has the practice been in the past? Has, has a department head requested permission to go away on vacation from anybody?
Yeah, they fill out a slip, as far as I know from the personnel bylaw, they fill out a slip and the personnel director, who's the, who was our finance director, would approve it, and typically would include in our information packet, you know, so-and-so's going to be away.
So until we get a new finance director or a new town administrator, has there been a policy that has been followed that, that addresses that prior function of the finance director, somebody else doing it? Or is that one of the things that's kind of fallen into the cracks?
Well, right now, the past year, really, nobody has been taking vacation, I can't, can't go anywhere.
Yeah.
Normally, the policy would be, if, if the department head was taking a vacation, would send an email generally to Catherine, and notify, going to be away between this date and that date, and who to contact that's in charge in their absence. But we haven't seen too much of that, because nobody's really taken a vacation.
Okay.
Can't go anywhere, yet.
So, so if somebody, if a department head would do that, that would be a, a policy that you could follow inconsistent with your prior practice?
Yeah.
Right, like typically, once the town administrator's on board, they would approve it, and then they keep us informed, you know, this person will be out for this amount of time. We used to get like a, just a memo in our packet.
Do, do you think the department heads need to be asked again or reminded that if they do want to go on vacation, or they're going to a conference or something, they're going to be gone for a while to let the administrator coordinator know?
They do it anyway.
They do it anyway?
Yeah, she, she, she's waving over there.
They do let me know, and I have been doing it since Mike, the previous chair. We just keep, we just keep a running list of what's going on. I try to let the chair know, for the most part, there's a, it's a very busy office, so I do try to keep him updated, so-and-so called in sick today, so-and-so's on vacation. But I have not been putting it in the agenda packets. If that's something that needs to change, I can certainly do that, but I was never, it's been a year now, and that, that's the first time that I've been asked to inform the entire board about it.
Is the practice, is that practice working, or do board members, some board members have complaints about it or issues with it?
Well, I have more of a question, like, within a department, this, the employees have to ask their department head for permission, you know, as I do at my job, can I have this day off? Right? So I thought that our personnel bylaw dictated that they had to submit a request and gain permission now. As a member of the board, knowing that we're operating without a, a town administrator, I feel like the board should have voted the chair the permission to approve those and then keep us informed. I mean, I believe that's kind of what Mike Wood did, he would let us know afterwards that so-and-so would be away or something. But our board was still involved, you know, in an administrative sense, because we don't have a town administrator, so there needs to be some kind of administrative approval process, an interim.
Beyond what the current, the current practice of at least having department heads notify Catherine?
Well, they notify her, but is that approval? I mean, what if, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, what if, if there was two of them coming off at the same time, or how would they know? Right? So I just thought there was a process laid out in our personnel bylaw that said, you submit a slip to your supervisor, and it's approved. Everybody has a process.
I don't have the personnel bylaws in front of me, so maybe that's an issue that we have.
The way it's been, the way it's, it's working, it seems to be fine. Doesn't seem to be any issue with it. If, if somebody's going to be out for a week, then Catherine would know, notify the chairman, and it would notify the members of the board. And again, with who, who was in charge of that particular department.
So, I mean, could, could Catherine's email be sent to the entire board?
Sure, sure.
And is that something that, that would work, Catherine? Could you do that so that the other board members also know?
Just a question. Does the board want to be informed someone calls in sick that day, or do you just want to be informed that they're on vacation for X number of days going forward?
I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's necessary. She did notify me last week, a couple people were out sick for the day, Monday, somebody was out sick. But I don't think that's, I don't think that needs to go to the whole board, you know, only out for, for a day. Normally, you wouldn't, you'd never know it. They would, when we had a finance director, they would notify the finance director, and the finance director would never notify the board.
Yeah. So is, is there a distinction between somebody being out sick and somebody being away for a vacation for two weeks? In the minds of the board members, that you would want to know the vacation, but not necessarily being?
Yes, they, they would know about the vacation.
Okay. Are we agreed on that, then, that that's something that the board could be notified about and that sick days, the board need not be notified about?
No, like an extended sick leave, if somebody was out, extended sick leave, the board would be notified.
Sure, that, that would be different.
And the same thing with the vacation, would, would work the same way. If someone took one vacation day, no, we wouldn't know. They'd let her know, you know, I'm taking a personal day or vacation day. I don't think that's something the board needs to be concerned with. But a week's vacation, yeah.
And, and this would be consistent with the process you had, well, with the finance director, I assume. So it worked then?
Right.
Boards in agreement, were in agreement that that, that system worked, so we're trying to kind of preserve and recreate that system now, so it doesn't, it seems as though that might be a solution? Ed, does that sound okay to you?
Yeah, it seems to be working fine the way it is.
And, but the, the board isn't being notified, all members of the board aren't being notified by vacations? So.
Well, since I've been the chairman, I don't think we've had anybody take a week's vacation, a day here, a day there.
Okay. But would you object to Catherine notifying the entire board if a department head said, I'd like to take a week off in September?
Oh, no, I would think that she would, that's something she would normally do anyway.
Okay. So we seem to have an agreement about that in any event.
And that's something that's always, always been done.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't see any, I don't see any reason to change it, it's always worked, worked well.
And it seems to be agreement with everybody, so. Let me turn to an issue that I heard here and, and earlier, and that was the issue of board members occupying the time of staff members. And it's, it's difficult to quantify how much is too much, but I heard a complaint being read by the chair about a board member taking up a lot of staff time in photocopying and researching records and things like that. Mr. Chair, is there any kind of board policy or prior practice that you've had about that sort of thing, about board members who are the town's executive, and they, they should have the right to, to make inquiry and question, but on the other hand, everyone would probably agree that if it's, if it's, if it's taking up too much time of a staff person, then that's not productive either? Do we have any guidelines we can fall back on?
The requests, the, the requests always went to the finance director, and then from the finance director to the individual department.
Mm-hmm.
And I equate that with if, as noted in here, if you made a request for something from the police department, you wouldn't go to an individual officer, you'd go to the police chief. And the same thing with the fire department, you wouldn't go to an individual firefighter, you'd go to the fire chief. So bypassing the chain of command, and, because they don't fall into, they're not going to fall into the direction of the town administrator. So, and this was when we had an interim finance director, bypassing the interim finance director and going right to the department head, and that wasn't productive.
Okay.
That was tying up, tying up too much time, and they couldn't get their regular work done.
Do we have a different situation now? Is it, the fact that we no longer have an interim finance director, we've got an administrative coordinator, is, is it, is it, do we have a different circumstance now? Can requests be put through the administrative coordinator the way they were for the finance director, the prior finance director?
Yeah, I don't think, I, I don't think recently we've had a, had an issue with that, that I, that I can recall, but you forget things, it might have been. But I, I don't think lately there's been, there's been a, there's been an issue. Jason?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we discussed that, and we decided that those type of requests should go through the chair. So it wasn't all five of us going to the individual departments to get the same information.
Yeah.
And they, they, that way, there, those requests could be consolidated.
And I think I took over in May.
May.
And I, I haven't received any requests from anybody for anything since then.
I probably shouldn't say this, but I asked Lori for a copy of a couple bills today. She sent them to me. So, but I'm on a, a subgroup that works on trash.
So.
So, I mean, I guess I would say that probably a policy, because I, I found that, and again, I think a lot of this difficulty was related to the working relationship with the interim, with somebody who was in here only one day a week, somewhat non-responsive. Sometimes when you ask something, sometimes you didn't get a response, and you couldn't get information that was necessary. So, and I think that, you know, in the past, if you went through reels of Selectment meetings, you'll see, there've been always members on the board that ask for information, that other members perhaps don't want to see, but they want to see. So I would be interested to see if there's policies from other boards of Selectment on that type of issue. I know from my work in the private world, when I worked for electric companies, we used to have a standard response for voluminous data that would always be made available to an individual at the site, you know, so if you really wanted to look for, through payroll records for six months, they could be made available on, on site and not have to be copied. That would be one way to do it. But I, I'm just curious that something like this must come up on boards of Selectment, you know, that people want to see different information, and, and yeah, you don't want one staff member standing at a copying machine for two hours. So I think a policy on, on requesting information is fine, because to some degree, after a point, if everything's, you have to wait till somebody's gets the email, then sees where it is, and then gets back to you, we get nothing done. You know, it takes tremendous amount of time. There's an inefficiency in funneling everything through one individual. I think there's an efficiency to having a policy that makes it very clear, you know, if you want just a couple copies of one thing, fine. You want- If you want something that's 10 pages or more, put it through the chair. And I, I think through the chair would be proper. I think that's the job of the chair. I don't think everything should go immediately to, um, an administrative coordinator who's there trying to coordinate work all day. This is board of selectmen business.
Um, just a, a comment. Uh, payroll records shouldn't be leaving the building. Uh, they're not something that somebody should be able to copy on a copying machine and, and take them home. There's sensitive information in there and, um, it's really not, uh, for the selectmen to see, but it's not public information. And, and that, uh, if, if they leave the town hall, you don't, you don't know where they're going and where those copies are going. Uh, and there, there's, there's information on there that shouldn't be, shouldn't be going out. And, uh, they, they should stay here. And if, if, it's always been, if a selectman wanted to see the, uh, the payroll records, uh, they look at them. They, uh, they're all made available. Uh, there was never a problem with that. And, and right now, the, the records are here before the meeting. Uh, but, uh, I, I, I just don't think that somebody should be making a copy of them and taking them home to study them. Uh, look at them here if they want them.
Uh, other comments? Does that seem like a reasonable constraint? Or sensitive records like payroll records?
I don't know. I mean, I, uh, over the years, watching town government, my understanding of what public records can be requested through the town clerk's office, um, through Freedom of Information Act, there's, there's not many records that you can't request really. I mean, you can't probably request someone's personnel file, but payroll reports, I didn't think were protected. Um, not that I want a copy, want to bring it home. I just, I think it'd be good to know. I mean, if there's certain records that are protected from the Freedom of Information Act, sure. But, um, I mean, right now, there's not a problem with access to the payroll records. There was one meeting when they came in late, so we delayed voting. Then we had a recess so we could look at them, then we voted them. But there was a period of time when they literally were not available at meetings. And we are expected to vote these.
Um, I, there is a difference between a, a board member request to get a copy of a, of a record and a, a public request, request under the Freedom of Information Act. They get screened. They sometimes would get screened by the attorney to make sure. So there is that distinction that could be made, I think it probably should be.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not going to take sides here, but it does seem to me that it's not unreasonable to suggest that there are some records that probably shouldn't be copied or removed from the town, at least without going through some kind of a screening process, like maybe, you know, uh, discussing it at a, at a meeting.
Right.
About whether circumstances ought to permit that to go, to, to happen. So, um, do you think that, uh, are, are, are there reasons why you feel it would be unfair or unreasonable to say that there are certain types of records that shouldn't leave the building and shouldn't be copied, except under, uh, exceptional circumstances discussed by the whole board? Is that a, is that a fair restraint?
I think that's fair. I think that what's not being touched upon is that at the time of the request, the records were said to be not available, had to be looked at, um, within a foot of a person's desk during a COVID pandemic. And that to me was unreasonable. And so, I mean, I think this is all water under the bridge. None of that is going on now. So to me, there's, what went on during the pandemic and unusual sets of circumstances caused, um, adverse events to happen and they perhaps weren't handled as well as they should have been. But going forward, I think that a policy on requests by board members, um, we should go through the chair for anything that's beyond a certain number of pages, say, something like that. You know, that's reasonable.
Um, Catherine, Catherine wanted to weigh in. Excuse me.
I was just going to say that I was instructed, um, certain records like payroll and things like that, they could be copied, but they had to be redacted.
They had to be redacted?
Yes, so, um, I haven't had any requests in a while now probably, but, um, yeah. So I, I can, I just have to make sure I take out most of the personal information so that they can leave town hall.
Is that a policy that, that the, the other board members would, would, uh, would accept?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, just a question. Um, the, um, the way I read the Freedom of Information requests, uh, Freedom of Information is federal. Uh, don't we fall under chapter 66 on mass public records requests and not Freedom of Information?
Yes, you do. A public records request is what I meant. I'm getting my requests mixed up, yes. Public records requests, sorry.
Yeah, but the, the other is, is federal.
Yes, that's, FOIA is federal and the public records request is under the state.
Yeah, that's the way I read the law under, under chapter 66.
Yeah. Well, uh, it's been suggested that maybe if, if just one or two or three pages or some minimal number of pages were, were sought, it might not be necessary to go through the chair. Could, can we agree on a number, like 10 pages or less? Or do you feel that any request ought to go through the chair?
For payroll records?
Not necessarily payroll records, but any other form of request.
I think it would be on a case-by-case basis. How much is, how much time is it going to entail to get this information? And, uh, it would be, uh, it would be a lot easier, I think, if it was stated, I would like this for this particular reason and rather than a fishing, uh, expedition.
Um, comments from other board members?
Yeah, it becomes challenging because at the time of the request, I believe we were really shorthanded. And that's one of the reasons what made the requests so difficult. But on the same token, it made it important to have. Because we were so shorthanded and we needed to have some of that information. So, yeah, I think like Kathy, Catherine said, Kathy said, it's all water under the bridge. Cause it's, we're a little bit beyond that and things have moved on. But, yeah, I think a request of 10 pages and putting that into writing would probably make it a lot more simple. And I think most of the requests that we're referring to is something from the finance department and not necessarily other departments.
Could, could you also say a request for 10 pages or less than 15 minutes of search time? Because it's possible one page might take five hours to find, too.
Very true.
Would that be acceptable, 10, 10 pages or 15 minutes?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, and, and so that wouldn't necessarily have to go through the board. But anything more than 15 minutes or 10 pages or go through the chair, but anything more than, than 15 minutes of staff time and 10 pages of copying or, or looking, would that request would go through the chair? Is that, is that reasonable? Is that acceptable, Mr. Chair? Are there any other issues? We've talked about three kind of categories of issues. One of them is requests for information and, um, uh, occupying staff time. Uh, we talked about, um, papers that are going to be present for the meeting, for the board meeting half an hour before. Um, and we talked about department heads and department head absentee or absences, that is, uh, vacation or prolonged sick time, notification of the board. I think we've got the basis for an agreement on those three and I'd be happy to summarize them. Are there any more areas that you'd like to discuss? Any other general areas where maybe, uh, an agreement by the board would save future disagreements and, and, uh, misunderstandings?
Um, I'm not sure. I, um, I, I think that's a big help and, um, and I appreciate you, um, mediating.
Happy to. Um, what I would propose is I'll go through, I'll read what I understand the general agreement to be and I'll send you an email. I don't think it's something you have to vote, but if you want to, you can. I mean, it, just as long as there's an understanding, it seems to me that that's, that's going to help a lot. And I recognize that we've had a really difficult time, particularly around town meeting time when there were lots of issues and there were personnel, you know, there were, there were personnel issues going on there. I recognize that that's kind of behind us now and that we're looking, you know, we're looking to a better future, I think, and hope. Um, particularly, you know, when we're able to find a new finance director, slant town administrator. Um, and these kinds of problems will be behind us. But just in case they should come up again, it seems to me it ought to be a good idea to have an understanding about what, you know, how we interact with each other. So, um, as I understand it, we're, we're agreed that, um, that Catherine will provide the, obviously the warrants are going to be here. Um, payroll records will be here and expense or revenue reports on request through the chair.
I thought those would be on monthly.
Pardon me?
On a monthly basis, they used to be, like in the first part of the.
On a monthly basis?
Right, we used to go on the first part of the month, once a month.
First of month?
Yeah.
So without necessary, not, not, without necessitating a request to the chair, they're just automatically produced at the beginning of the month?
Yeah.
Okay.
You, um, in, in the past, with, uh, um, in the, when I've been on here six years now, um, and generally it would be requested by a member at a meeting that they'd like to see such and such at, at our next meeting. And that, that worked pretty good.
Okay, so, so either way, could be requested at one meeting to have it at the next or automatically at the beginning of the month?
I would like to request automatic. It used to be automatically at the beginning of the month. It was just so easy, then you didn't have to request it. Why, I mean, why would you have to request to see the expenditure report and the revenue report?
Well, but on the other hand, how hard is it to do that?
It's not, it's just to push a button. I spoke into a prior finance director's regular break, he said it's a.
No, I mean, how hard is it to ask a week ahead of time?
Oh, so you want us to just always ask every month?
Well, I don't want anything, I'm just trying to find an agreement here that.
I'm just trying to make it easy, it used to be automatic, that's all.
So, um, with respect to expense or revenue reports, um, we're agreed at least that Catherine will produce them automatically at the first meeting of the month without request. And that if, is that, is that, I think that's what we said. And if a board member would like to see them at another time, the board member can make the request through the chair?
Through the chair, yep.
Okay.
Can I just ask, what is it that, um, that, what are they, again, the, I know expense.
Revenue and expense reports? Yeah.
There's something I have to get from the finance department.
Hey, something Ellen used to send out automatically.
Yeah, no, I, but I have to. Well, she sends it to each department.
I have to get it on her schedule so that she remembers to do it every month. So, that's fine, I'm just, just trying to coordinate it.
Okay. Coordinating.
Um, the second one was department head, uh, department heads. And I think we're in agreement that, um, uh, that the, uh, I guess if, if the reports come through, um, the administrative coordinator, they'll go to the board chair. And the board chair will, will have that information and will communicate that to the board. If a department head or another, uh, key person is going to be gone, either on medical leave or on, uh, vacation for, you know, more than a couple of days, the board will get that information from the chair. Is that, do we all agree to that?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. And then the, uh, request for information, um, I think we agreed that if it's a, a page or two, less than 10 pages or less than 15 minutes of staff time, the request doesn't have to go through the chair, but otherwise the request shall go through the chair.
That's reasonable.
Yeah, fair enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, is there anything else I can help you with?
Well, the one other thing, I think that kind of, um, caused a little bit of disruption in our meetings was when there, when there's a complaint, um, whether it's against an appointed board member or an elected board member, um, I know back like a year before the pandemic, obviously, um, we had a complaint regarding an appointed board member in the conservation area and we followed a policy on it, or I thought we had a policy. You know, and the policy was followed. Um, the board member was notified, the complaint was put in writing by the individual that wanted to make a complaint. Board member was given the information, they were given the choice to have the complaint in executive or open and our board scheduled the time. And we even reviewed part of a meeting tape during that review. And, and the end result of that type of practice of dealing with complaints was that all parties, I think, felt that their concerns were heard and it was resolved. Um, what I've observed more recently is that a complaint is just aired out here and then in one case, a week later, an appointed board member comes in to re, you know, rebuck or whatever you want to call it, refute the complaint, saying, I never said that, I never did that. That's not a good way for, I mean, we're tying up a lot of our time when we have a huge agenda on something that if there is a legitimate complaint, the person should put it in writing, submit it. If it's something that the board of selectmen has to have a hearing on, submit it to the chairman and we have a process. I believe we have a process already for this.
Is there something in the personnel bylaws that, again, I should have brought them with me?
That's what I'm guessing because we followed a process the last time it happened, that I, that we did follow a process. The last other time, we didn't follow a process.
Was that a one-time event for some reason or other, or?
Over the years, there've been complaints against board members elected and appointed in this town. And I believe this is the process that you have to give the, the complaint has to be put into some written form. Um, the person that is being complained against, whether they're appointed or elected, has to be given that information, I believe, 48 hours in advance at least so they have time to see, you know, what the problem is. Um, cause I do think that it's difficult being on appointed and elected boards in today's age. And, you know, complaints are going to happen. We should make sure that we have agreed on a policy. So if what we did that time with the conservation board isn't officially a policy, then I would say we need to have a policy if there's no other way to do it.
I think, uh, we should take a look at the personnel bylaws. Does, do you know, is there, Mr. Watson, do you know, is there a, a specific practice that's recorded in the bylaws? Do you know?
Not, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't either.
We can have Catherine, uh, get you it.
Yeah, I can take a look at them too.
Yeah, uh, where we ran into a problem in the past was, uh, uh, when, when I was first elected, uh, we started, at some point, we started doing public comment before the meeting where somebody could come in and they were given like three minutes to, uh, make a statement. Um, uh, and it was, it's been used to promote, um, some function in town. And, and then there was, it, it turned into a, an attack on, uh, on board members. And, uh, so it was put on hold for a while and then, uh, it was, uh, the policy was, we had a special policy for the public comment where they were given three minutes and notify, uh, the chairman of the board or, um, Catherine that they wanted to speak. And, uh, it, it seemed to have stopped a, a attack on, on board members or, or others. And if it was something that, that required, uh, uh, more than three minutes, they would, uh, they could ask for an agenda item and bring it up at a, at a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
But these are, uh, I know a lot of municipalities do a public comment. Uh, some of them do it at the end of the meeting. Uh, you know, it's just members of the general public coming in and, um, making a comment. Uh, some, sometimes it might be, uh, something that they've, they're running a difficulty on. And, uh, I, I just think it's a big benefit, uh, to have the members of the general public able to come in before the meeting and, uh, for the body and, and speak their mind. And it's, it's not something that really, really takes, takes much time. Uh, and, yeah, you get attacks on members or attacks, uh, attacks for other board, other boards, the committees where they have had problems.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, uh, I think since I've been on the board, one of the biggest complaints that I've heard on, on other boards or about other boards to be, uh, more correct, uh, that they say that, uh, you know, the other boards are, uh, appointed by the board of selectmen. And their thing is, if I have problems with the board of selectmen, we can get somebody to run against the person that we have a problem with. But on these appointed boards, how do we get rid of somebody that we don't want? That we have a problem with, that they're appointed by the board of selectmen? And they were explained, well, you have to get a majority of the. And they were explained, well, you have to get a majority of the board of selectmen that, to go along with not appointing that person. And that becomes, that becomes a problem. They become very frustrated at some of the boards, they don't like their actions, even though some of them might be following the letter of the law, they, they don't know how to get rid of these people. And because they're not elected, they're appointed by the board. So that, that seems to have stopped a little bit, but it, it has in the past been a problem.
Comments by, by other board members? Jason? Catherine?
Well, yeah, I think it's two separate things. One is if a board member, any board member on the board of selectmen receives a complaint, which we do, you know, people will stop you any which way and say, you know, this is wrong, or this person did this. If, if that complaint is going to be brought into a board of selectmen meeting, I believe that we have to have a process. It has to be in writing. Whoever they're complaining about has to be notified prior to the meeting. We, I think we have a process, and I think you'll find that out. Public comment, I think, is, is a whole different, we already have a policy on public comment. I think they're actually supposed to submit it in writing, although honestly, if they just have a few things to say, I don't think they have to write it down every time. I think that the policy in writing was, to Chairman Watson's point, to ensure that when people come in for public comment, they're not just coming in to, to try to embarrass somebody, you know, by saying bad things about them. I kind of feel that one of the biggest things that a board can do is to, to try to treat others as you would have them treat you. I mean, there's, there's Robert's Rules, and there's all these parliamentary procedures, but when it comes right down to the local level, you know, try to, if someone emails you, try to respond to them. You know, if, if, if the administrative coordinator is trying to find out how many people can make a meeting, find the time to say, "Yep, I can make it, no, I can't." Because when you don't respond to emails, and when, or when you respond abruptly, it creates all the tensions. And I think that, to Jason's point, we've come through a particularly tense period of time, going into a pandemic without a head officer in the town, put us under a lot of pressure, and put the employees under a lot of pressure. And I think that the fallout from that was some unfortunate exchanges and circumstances that put behind us. But put ahead of us, what, what would you do differently so that this doesn't occur the next time there's a pressure on the town? You know, so to have a policy, if we don't have one in our bylaws, personnel, a policy on when you receive a complaint, whether it's from a resident, a town employee, another appointed board, whatever it is, what are you supposed to do about it? Do you walk into the meeting and start talking about it? Or do we have a policy? The school committee, when I was on it for a brief period, we had a policy, when a parent had a complaint, they had to go through a chain of command. You know, not come right into the school committee with it, let it go through a process. And that's all I'm saying, if we don't have a process for complaints, we should have one. Because I felt that the way we did handle the one before with the conservation commission, it went really well, it was a good outcome. And recent complaints have not had what I consider to be a good, more of a standoff. So I value both our elected and our appointed boards. I, I feel it's okay for there to be a difference of opinion between different people on other boards. I don't want to appoint only the people that I agree with on boards. It's healthy for debate, it's healthy for disagreement, it's healthy to agree to disagree sometimes. But overall, you know, when it comes down to it, nobody on an appointed or an elected board wants to be dragged through the mud on camera. And if we don't have a policy that prevents that, we should.
On the other hand, and I've seen a lot of boards with public comment periods, most boards do, that I go before, have a public comment period. We do have rules, just like we have rules at town meeting.
Yeah.
You know, you don't attack people, you, you attack policies, or you question, or you disagree with policies.
That's a good point.
You disagree with actions. You don't, you don't engage in personal attacks, you don't even need to mention the person by name. If the rules such as that were enforced by the chair, wouldn't it be beneficial for the board from time to time to hear people if they do have a quick complaint about, you know, this appointed official or that appointed official? Wouldn't that be beneficial and, and helpful to not only your job, but also the functioning of government in the town, to hear that from time to time?
Right, if it could be, that's actually very good wording, I don't think that's in our policy on public comment right now. I'm not positive about that, maybe we could check.
Yeah, I always, always understand, no, no attacks on, on individuals. And I'm not, I'm not even sure that that's a really big issue. We haven't had, we haven't really had much of a problem with that. People have been generally very respectful when they come in on a public comment, and they know that if it's something that they can't handle in a short period of time, they request it on an agenda item. And they would be shut down if they started really attacking, attacking people. I think that is in the policy, although it's been changed a couple of times.
But to clarify, what I was referring to in my prior thing about the not, is if one of the members of the board of selectmen receives a complaint, what is our policy as a board? Do we bring it right out onto the board floor, or do we have a process? Do we do, as you say, discuss it without using names, discuss it in terms of procedures or policies? I mean, there should be a process, because people do come to us. And I've gotten complaints before, and I try to direct them to the individual to try to talk it out, work it out.
That should go to human resources.
We don't have human resources.
We don't have right now.
It, I'm sorry, it should go to?
Something like that should go to human resources, a complaint, any type of complaint against an individual, whether it's a board member or, or appointed or elected board member, should, should go to human resources. And then, but we don't have anybody in human resources right now. But we will.
Well, what's the interim arrangement, then?
So, I mean, that, that's, that's an excellent point. If someone's got a, a serious complaint against an appointed or an elected board member, a complaint can always be written to the human resources. But if it's a minor complaint, and someone were to come in and say, "I called the tree warden and, you know, something didn't happen, I just, you know, could you mention that to him? I didn't think he was, you know, thought he was going to do it, didn't do it, could you please mention that to him?" Something like that, a minor complaint. With, with, with the constraints that you don't have personal attacks, and, you know, we're civilized, we don't raise our voice, we don't call names, things like the same rules we have at town meeting.
I'm not even sure that that would, would, somebody would come in on a public comment with that, they would bring it to a member of the board of selectmen, and the board of selectmen would, would be able to handle it. They could, they could go to that individual, and, you know, there's nothing wrong with talking things out. And, and I know in this day and age, it's emails and text messages, but still personal contact sometimes is a lot better.
Well, you can make the policy you want. You can make a policy that public comment period is not the time for complaint against officials, that that should be sent privately by mail or email or a personal telephone call to a board member. You can make that policy if you want. And I'm not sure where you want to go with it, but if, if that's something you want to deliberate on and, and consider, you know, at a later meeting, I don't, my, one of my rules is that meetings that go past an hour stop being kind of helpful, and I'm past that hour.
Yep, I agree.
Remember, we got started a little late, too.
We did get started a little late, all right. Another five minutes.
No, we get, I'll, I'll give it to you, an hour.
Yeah, it is very.
But you're right.
So I've got three things to send to you in an email, the three areas we discussed, the three areas that I think we had some agreement on, a consensus. And the, the issue about public comment period and, and the scope of that, and, you know, that's your call, you can make that policy, there's no requirement that you allow people to comment at all at a public meeting. You don't have to. Or you can, if you do have it, you can say it's about A, B, and C, but it's not about D and E. If you have D and E, go take that somewhere else.
We, we do have a written policy on that, and maybe Catherine can pop that up on it. I know it's been changed a couple of times.
Okay.
But, you know, to me, that's, we should have people come in and, and speak in a public comment. You know, a lot of them are not attacking everybody, and that's, and that happened before, and it was kind of cleaned up. But, you know, we do work for the people, and they do have a right to come into a meeting and speak their piece. And it, there's not too many selectmen, city councils that don't have public comment. And it, I think, I think it works, I think it's healthy.
Well, from your point of view, and if I were sitting in your place, I would welcome it, because then I have an opportunity to respond. You know, you can, you can respond. If there's a, a complaint that's not legitimate or not correct as a board member, right there in the public forum, you can say, "Excuse me, I think your facts are wrong, that's not really how this happened." That's a very valuable, a very valuable opportunity to have. And I also think, again, I'm, I'm trying to mediate, so I shouldn't tell you what I think, but I agree that a, an elected board needs public feedback, and that my view is that it's almost always helpful to have people given the opportunity to come in and speak. And a three-minute limitation is probably going to stop somebody who's going off on a, a rant or a tirade. And, and, and if you've got other policies, for example, if it's a complaint, you go somewhere else, then, then that's helpful, too. But it seems to me that it's an, you know, from a town council point of view, it is very helpful for members on elected boards to have feedback from the public. You would want that, I'd want that, I'm sure you all do, you want to hear what, what members of the public are saying. You probably get plenty of phone calls and emails anyway, but, but that's your call. I mean, that's not, not an obligation, you don't have to permit people to speak at your meetings. Public hearings are different, but just a regular meeting, you know? But, as, you know, every me, almost every meeting I've been to, whether it's a school committee meeting or a board meeting, you know?
And I think we had it in the policy, we just handed it, I think that, my recollection is, we, we didn't have to respond, you know, somebody come in, give their piece, and that was it, and not enter into a discussion, and then.
No. But you may if you wish. I mean, that's, that's, that's the point. But, so I've been given the, the.
Well, it was long on the, it's five minutes. That seemed a little long, but five minutes.
It does seem long.
Hasn't been amended since 2017.
So, so what I'll tell you in my email is that you've got a resident public comment policy, and you're free to change it if you want. If you're not satisfied with how it works, the board's free to, free to amend that. So with that, I'm going to, I'm going to close.
Well, thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it, and maybe you could just stick, do you mind sticking around for just a couple of minutes?
Oh, no, not at all.
Jason, you got to roll with time, we're not letting you out yet. But we just have a, we have a discussion of interim, next on the agenda, discussion of interim board procedures during, pending hiring of a town administrator slash finance director.
Okay.
And I don't know, I don't know who requested this one, do you know who requested that one? Was that?
I did. I thought that's what we just did.
Excuse me?
That was the, the topic given from Mr. Hewitt.
That was how I framed our discussion, because it originally came up in context of some of the issues about new hiring, so that's just what I called it. It's not that I had intended to discuss anything specific about the hiring unless you want to.
Okay.
Are you available for hire? No, I'm just kidding.
No.
Nice office, you can hide it.
Well, you'd have to decline the vote.
Yes.
I, I think what this, what this is, is, you know, as far as the board taking on some responsibilities that we don't have, we, we don't have a finance director. And, you know, you know, some of the, the board could take on additional roles, but it seems everything seems to be going pretty smooth right now.
Is that the consensus of the board?
Well, I think we just discussed that.
Well, we discussed three, three issues and.
Personnel and finance and, yeah, the only thing we didn't discuss is computers, but let's not go there. They do what they want. So I think we've, we've kind of discussed the interim, what we're doing right now, and whether or not it's working, and how well it's working, you know?
I think there was a specific reference to the finance director's responsibilities being picked up or, or apportioned or being fulfilled by somebody. And, and the question was, is that working out, or is that not working out at present? And so I guess the question is to, is there a consensus that it seems to be working out well at present?
Yes, a lot, a lot of, a lot of the duties have been, of the finance director have been thrown on the administrative assistant, administrative coordinator. It seems, it seems to me to be working fine. And some of the other, some of the department heads have taken on additional responsibilities, which they, which they have a stipend for, and, you know, we had some growing pains in the beginning. It seems to be, seems to be working. And I haven't had any, I haven't had any, I haven't had any complaints on it. Have you had anything, Jason?
No.
Kathy?
You mean complaints from residents, or, I mean, we're, I think we're doing fine given how short-staffed we are, you know? We realize things are not that happening as quickly as they normally do, but I think with what we've already talked about tonight, we'll see another small improvement. And I think we keep going forward. I mean, the majority of the finance director's job honestly was finance, and we have hired a consultant, pick up a chunk of that, and we promoted a clerk to the assistant, and the accountant has increased her hours at the last town meeting. So if we can just get a treasurer in there, I think we'll actually, for the first time, not have an issue in that. Everything else, I think, will be taken care of once we get the town administrator in here, which is, I think, going to happen sooner rather than later. So we're just kind of in that interim period, that's all.
So I think you're, I think, I hear you agreeing with the chair that, for the time being, things are going okay with the finance director's responsibilities having been reassigned to other people.
Well, except for, I think, the procurement issue, because we did have an issue on that. And I think that, well, maybe, maybe at our next meeting, we can talk about it, if now that we know our, our, you know, the department head of planning is already certified, that's the perfect place to temporarily place that responsibility.
That's, that's a, a specific particular issue that.
Yeah.
It might be best for you to resolve at a future meeting.
I think so, yes.
And if you need my help, I'll be happy to come back.
No, I think, I think we'll have an easy resolution on that one.
Well, I think you've been a big help tonight.
Fantastic.
It's my pleasure.
You always make it sound much simpler than it is when we're in the middle of these meetings.
I know you've been through a hard time.
You've been through the wringer.
Believe me, I know, there's multiple issues, and there's multiple problems, and, you know, you're, quite frankly, you've handled it well, even though there are disagreements and misunderstandings, believe me. I'm proud of you. I've seen towns that just, you know, go to civil war against each other. I don't think it's quite there yet.
Good, well, that's good to know.
All right, well, thank you very much for permitting me to come before you and try to help you, Mr. Chair.
Well, look, I'll tell you, it's been, it's our pleasure to listen to you, and I think you've helped out immensely, and we thank you for your time.
You're welcome, and I'll send you an email, I'll send it to the chair tomorrow, and confirming what I think was the consensus. And I'm always available to help out again. I don't charge you for this, by the way, this isn't legal work. You get a bill that says no charge, so it's my pleasure, it's my obligation as a town's council to try and help you folks do the best you possibly can. So, happy to help out.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
And thanks for all you've been doing. I know you've been working diligently on the cable TV contract and. I know you've been working diligently on the cable TV contract and.
I have, and we're almost there. Kathy Maloney, just aside, Kathy Maloney is trying to calculate how much, let me see if I've got this right. She needs to know where the remote origination locations are and how, what the distances are. That's what she needs. And we've got a license in place, we've got an agreement as to the money, so that, that will be forthcoming fairly shortly.
I thought Chris was in contact with you and give you that information.
He did, and for some reason or other, Kathy needed to confirm it or to check with her own folks. They've got to check through Comcast to see.
Okay.
What information they have. That's, that's, I talked to Kathy two days ago, and she said she's got to go through her own people to.
Okay, so we're, we're all set on our end, we're just waiting for Comcast.
That's right. Yep. We've got an agreement in place. And I'll have you that license, I hope, within a week.
Oh, gee whiz.
Yep.
A week.
We won't have anything left to do.
That'll, yeah, that'll, that'll be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Is there anything else, or are we motion to adjourn?
I think we're set.
I think we're set.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Seven to adjourn.
None, all in favor. Adjemment unanimous.
Right.
Three in favor, two absent.
Right. Absentia, non-absentia.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ed. Thank you for having me. Thank you.